All right, I'm gonna call the City Council Workshop to order for Tuesday, March 20th, 2018. And let the record show that the entire council is here, it's present somewhere. First thing on our workshop items is DS-18-022, Discuss Agenda Items for Regular City Council Meeting of March 27, 2018. And first thing on there is our minutes, MN-18-006, Consider Minutes of Regular City Council Meeting of March 13, 2018. Council, any questions or comments on those? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to our Resolutions. RS-18-018, Consider Memorandum Resolution to Accept the Annual Audit Report for the Fiscal Year Ended September 30, 2017. Mr. Locke, you ready?
The auditors haven't made it over here from across the street.
We can come back to them. I know they're here, we just left the meeting with them.
They don't know the meeting's over here.
We sent someone over there to make sure that they're aware of that.
So we'll just go ahead and move on to the next one, and when they come in, we'll come back to that one. RS-18-019, Consider Memorandum Resolution Appointing Presiding and Alternate Judges for the May 5, 2018, General and Special Election. Mrs. Davis.
The City Council is required to appoint both presiding and alternate judges for city elections, and staff has identified qualified individuals to work as election officials for both the city and the KISD general and special election on May 5 of this year. The estimated cost for early voting at four polling locations and election day voting at 13 polling locations is approximately $15,000, and that cost is budgeted in the FY-2018 election expense account. And staff recommends that the individuals listed in the resolution be appointed to serve as election officials for both the City of Colleen and KISD general and special election on May 5, 2018, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Mrs. Fleming?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Davis, I have one question. The WCID candidates, are they gonna be, they're gonna be, we're gonna be voting on them the same day?
It's my understanding that there is an election this year, and it will occur on the same day, but they are making their own voting recommendations or accommodations, I'm sorry.
You're having your own judges as well.
Yes, I understand that they will be having polling locations set up at some of our polling locations, and so if you are, when you go in to vote, if you wanna also vote at the WCID election, you'll just need to look within the room and identify their polling station. You're welcome.
All right, anybody else? All right, thank you. Next item is RS-18-020, Consider Memorandum Resolution Approving the Use, A Request for Proposal for the Selection of a Healthcare Plan and Dental Plan for Both Fully Insured and Self-Inured Options. Mrs. Bark, welcome.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, Council, and City Manager. The item before you this evening is for permission to use the RFP process for the selection of healthcare plan for both fully insured and self-insured options. Just to tell you a little bit of the history, the City of Colleen currently provides each employee medical insurance with Scott &amp; White Health Plan and dental insurance with MetLife, so that each employee has access to healthcare. In FY-18, the city continued to pay 100% of the medical and dental premiums for the base plan only for all eligible employees. The medical and dental insurance benefits are reviewed annually, and Scott &amp; White and MetLife both offered the city a rate pass in FY-18 year, and then the city is currently has a fully funded healthcare plan with Scott &amp; White. Before a purchase method other than competitive sealed bidding is used, the governing body must determine that the alternative process will provide the best value to the city. So therefore, our alternatives are to keep the current healthcare plan with Scott &amp; White and MetLife, and our dental plan with MetLife, or we can request for a proposal process. With the Request for Proposal Process, or the RFP process, it will allow the healthcare providers to propose the most cost-effective healthcare for the city and its employees. It will also allow healthcare providers to submit proposals on both fully insured and self-insured healthcare plan options in determining the best value for the city. It also allows staff to evaluate healthcare plan qualifications, experience, references, et cetera, to determine the best value. After the selection of the health plan, staff will negotiate the services and the fees with the selected healthcare provider, and then will submit a contract for you, the council, to approve. So our recommendation as staff is that the City Council determine that the RFP process will provide the best value to the city for the review of healthcare plans, and authorize staff to proceed with issuing the RFP process for both fully insured and self-insured options. Any questions?
Mr. Harris.
I was just curious, do we still, we still do the 100%?
We do 100% for the base plan. We have three plans in the City of Colleen, we have the base plan, the mid plan, and the high plan, and for the high deductible base plan, we do offer, we cover that for the employees full, 100% for the employee only.
So is it, is it 100%, 100% just for the base plan, if they do another plan, is it, how does it work?
They pay a little bit more, yes, sir.
Okay, they pay a little bit more, okay. I was just curious about that, 'cause I'd heard about the different plans and so forth.
Yeah, the premiums for the base plan is 378.78, and for the mid plan, I'm gonna probably go off memory here, is about 410, and so the employees pay the difference of that.
Between 378 and 410, okay. All right, thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Johnson.
Is Scott &amp; White and MetLife saying anything about them participating in the bid process if council moves forward with this recommendation?
Yes, sir, they will probably participate. We've had meetings, and they're very interested still in keeping our business, yes, sir.
I'm hoping that they submit the same bid, just in case we don't get anything better, at least we don't get a higher rate from them.
Yes, sir.
And I just have one question, have, since we've approved this plan, has other hospitals been part of it? 'Cause I heard that Seton Hall, Seton is now part of it, too?
Yes, it's, basically what we're doing here is the plan itself, it's not the hospital, so it's the insurance that we're bidding for, but our insurance currently with Scott &amp; White does allow our employees now to go to Seton, and actually, they're in network, and they pay the same rates as if they were to go to Scott &amp; White, yes, sir. And that just started, we sent that information out to our employees just recently.
Mr. Rera.
They still paying for HMO, PPO?
HMO.
All right, anybody else? All right, thank you, Ms. Bark. Moving on to, Jonathan's not here yet, so moving on to ordinances, OR-18-004, Consider An Ordinance Approving a Tariff to Authorize an Annual Rate Review Mechanism with Atmos Energy Corporation. Ms. Davis.
All right, I'm sure you all remember that Texas cities have original jurisdiction over rates charged by natural gas companies within their city limits, and gas companies are allowed to recover their costs for expanding, maintaining, and replacing infrastructure, and state law establishes the Gas Reliability Infrastructure Program, or GRIP, as the mechanism for doing so. Since 2007, cities served by Atmos have operated under a negotiated rate process called a rate review mechanism rather than the statutory GRIP process. This process was negotiated by the Steering Committee of Cities Served by Atmos, of which the city is a member along with 171 other cities in the state of Texas. Cities generally oppose the GRIP process because it allows no review of the reasonableness of capital investments, and also ignores declining expenses and increasing revenues when setting rates. And if a city denies a rate increase and the company appeals, the cities are not allowed to participate in the Railroad Commission's review. Cities cannot recover any rate case expenses that they may incur also through this process. The rate review mechanism does allow a more in-depth review of rate increase requests and more city and steering committee participation in that process. In 2007, 17, I'm sorry, the rate review mechanism settlement included a termination of the current rate review mechanism requiring this renegotiation. The proposed rate review mechanism includes reducing the allowed rate of return on equity from 10.5% down to 9.8%. It also recognizes Atmos' reduction in its federal income tax rate from 35% down to 21%, which should result in a rate reduction in the next month or two. It also extends the amount of time that cities have to review and act upon rate review mechanism filings from about three months to approximately five months. And the alternatives in front of you today, council, are to first approve the ordinance and continue with the rate review mechanism process. This would allow for continued increased review for cities into the rate adjustment requests. It also allows for continued participation of the city with the steering committee. And the rate review mechanism process has worked well for 10 years, resulting in lower natural gas rates for Atmos customers in Colleen. Your other alternative is to disapprove the ordinance and follow the statutory GRIP, or Gas Reliability Infrastructure Program. This would require city staff to review and analyze a GRIP filing alone without the assistance of the steering committee and all of its consultants, who are tires to conduct that extensive review. Both staff and the executive committee of the Steering Committee of Cities Served by Atmos recommend approval of the ordinance accepting the revised rate review mechanism. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have, and we also have Mr. Street from Atmos here, who's, can answer any questions on Atmos' behalf.
Mr. Johnson.
GRIP, R M, I support. I was reading the list of cities, 172 cities, I only seen one large city on there, Fort Worth. Is there a reason why the larger cities are not on there? Is it because maybe they have a larger legal staff, and they can?
That's my guess, that they're better able to handle it in-house.
Is there any?
Do you know? There are only one large city that's included in the Steering Committee of Cities? Is it either that they don't have Atmos, or is it that they're more capable to handle the review in-house?
One, the City of Dallas stands alone, they have their own review mechanism, so out of the metroplex, that would be the big one that has a standalone, and they do it through their own city staff. There also is a second coalition of cities called ATM, Atmos Texas Municipalities, who covers about, I think, 70 cities, so some of the other cities are covered by a different coalition.
Is there any, is there any push by the state to push for more cities to do the GRIP, you think that going forward?
I haven't seen or heard anything about that. I think that the state has its process set in statute in other cities, and Atmos have found a way to make it work.
Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, thank you, Ms. Davis. Now we're gonna jump back up to our resolutions, RS-18-018, Consider Memorandum Resolution to Accept the Annual Audit Report for the Fiscal Year Ended September 30, 2016. Mr. Locke, you're up again.
Thank you again, Mayor and City Council. Last fiscal year, the city issued a request for qualification for auditing services, and at that time, the Audit Committee recommended, and City Council approved, for Bell, Harris, Pahachek to provide the city auditing services. The initial contract term is for two years, and we have three one-year renewal. Earlier this afternoon, Bell, Harris, Pahachek met with the Audit Committee and provided an overview of the results of the audit, and Robert Bell is here this evening to provide the summary of the audit to City Council. Mr. Bell.
Welcome, Mr. Bell.
Thank you, it's an honor to be here this evening. Laura Hand, the partner on the engagement, is passing out the booklets, and I'm gonna go over the results, the audit, I'm gonna do it in a very summary format. We presented three actual reports, the two are going to be in this loose bound, spiral bound here. One is the Passenger's Facility Charge Compliance Report, covering your airport operation, this is required by FAA. It's a clean report, everything you need's here, that will satisfy the FAA requirements. The second report is a Single Audit Report, this is over your federal grant programs, again, no problems with your federal grant programs, this satisfies all the federal government requirements. Those are the two kind of companion documents to the city's primary financial statements, the big, thick, bound document. If you would flip to the second tab, the Financial Statement tab, the very first letter, very first item you see, page number one, is our Independent Auditor's Report. We've issued a unmodified audit opinion, which is the highest level of assurance we can provide to City Council, that all the disclosures required by generally accepted accounting principles have been included, and the financial statements are materially correct. And that's what, exactly what the governing body wants and needs to hear, and that's what your credit rating agencies wants and need to hear, and so that is exactly where you need to be at from an independent auditor's standpoint. There is a tremendous amount of financial information in here, and with that being said, I would like to compliment management, they have been prepared, the entire report itself. It's a very large undertaking to do that, and they've done an excellent job in putting together, we, for the size of the cities, we had the least amount of adjustments, I think, as we've had for any clients this year, so I would like to compliment the care that the city took and its staff in putting together the document, as our findings and our adjustments to it were extremely nominal based upon the size of the city. If I could direct your attention back over to a couple of financial items. Sorry, I lost my earmark page. Back on page 80 and 81 is the Budget to Actual Presentation for the General Fund. In my opinion, this is one of the most important financial pages within the entire report. This compares your actual results of your general fund with the final amended budget, and provides a variance in the far right-hand column, so you can see how well management did at meeting City Council's plan when adopted the budget. On the revenues, the city came in slightly less than anticipated, 1.7 million dollars less than anticipated. That occasionally happens, not to be concerned on, and when you're talking about $70 million operating budget, that's not missing it by too much. And then on the expenditure side, total expenditures over on page 81 in the variance column, total expenditures came in to the good, $4,148,000. So again, if you accomplished every goal and objective you set out for at the beginning of the budget year, that's an excellent budget variance to have. What most grant credit rating agencies look at is, they look at the financial health as a governmental entity as a comparison of its operating budget. In the state of Texas, you hear them talk about the rainy day fund, so your fund balance is your rainy day fund. Most financial advisors will say, you should have two to three months of your operating budget on hand at any time to weather any type of financial crisis the city may encounter. And the city has, has a operating expenditures of 76.8 million dollars. The ending budget was $20,177,000 for the year, that was an increase of 2.5 million dollars, and that gets the city at about approximately 26% or right at over the three-month requirement, so the city is in great financial shape with the general fund in comparison to its operating expenditures. Also would just like to point out that over on page 25 is the results of the city's business type activities. These are the activities that are generally designed to be self-sustaining, self-supporting, where the city's monitoring their operations. The airport came in with a positive increase for the year of 1.7 million dollars. Solid waste came in with a positive increase of 3.3 million dollars. The Water and Sewer Fund had a positive increase of 8.6 million dollars, and the Drainage Utility Fund had a positive increase of 2.5 million dollars. And that's right where you wanna be at with all of your business-type operating activities. I'd be more than happy to entertain any questions that the council may have about the results of the audit.
Questions, Mr. Johnson.
Is there someone I can reach out to? It's kind of a little early, I wish I would've got, maybe got the report a week earlier, it takes a little bit for me to process, but is there?
Back on page, the financial, back on page in the financial tab on our letterhead at the very bottom of it, our telephone number's there. My name is Robert Bell, you're free to call me, or Laura Hand, we'd be happy to entertain any questions you have. Most people don't like to talk to accountants, so we don't get many phone calls, so we're lonely.
And also, I think after today, I think the city's gonna post it on their website so that everybody has an opportunity to take a look at it.
I close the business tomorrow.
I close the business tomorrow. Any other questions? All right, very good, thank you, sir. All right, moving back up to our discussion items, DS-18-023, Discuss Large Truck Parking Adjacent to Residential Property. I remember this, Chief Kimball, you're up.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Item before us again, on the discussion item, is Large Truck Parking in Residential Area. We brought the ordinance, a proposed ordinance to you some weeks ago, moving, or moving the restrictions in, we had some, or I had some follow-up to do. One of the, one of the things that we, when I started to look at the ordinance, one of the things that we had to consider was Fort Hood. There was a, there was a part of Fort Hood and their material going out to soldiers for national security that we wanted to make sure that we took care of accordingly. So I had a meeting with Fort Hood, and I wanted to know how, I wanted to make sure our ordinance didn't, didn't hamper operations out at Fort Hood. That issue has been resolved. If they have truckers bringing material in from Alaska, they have a way to bring those trucks into Fort Hood 24 hours a day, let them stay there, and then they could deliver into Fort Hood proper at a specific time. So, so that, once that issue was resolved, I reached out to some, as many of the local truckers through their organization, their trucking organization, and they didn't, the trucking organization didn't seem to be too concerned about the local truckers, because they said they know the rules, the rules are different throughout the country, and they just have to adapt, so. And I believe if there is a commercial entity that have to take care, if they have to park at Temple, let the Temple truck stop and drive, I mean, that's just what they have to do, or they make arrangements with a private entity to, for them to park, so. I think all those issues have been resolved, there may be some others that other people were looking at, but as far as that part, those issues were resolved, and we can still discuss the item.
All right, so Mr. Oakley.
So Chief, you saying that there's, there's maybe a memorandum of agreement of sort for truckers to park this area, is it, is it on the reservation side of the fence, or on the other side?
On the reservation side.
So you, so you, there is, so you're saying that there's a possibility that truckers can park there, they have a process?
If they have business at Fort Hood, they can. Generally, the way it was explained to me in the meeting is that if they have material for Fort Hood, they have specific written, specific rules written in their contracts, that they can enter a marshalling yard 24 hours a day, that they can, they can rest there, and then they can deliver onto Fort Hood proper.
So let me ask you a follow-on question, with, with, with the issue of trucks parking, do we know how many of these trucks that are parking, I guess where they're parking now, the amount, the number a day, a week?
I didn't think they wanted to, I think for security reasons, they didn't want to discuss probably what and how much stuff they had parked there.
Thank you.
So, so just to kind of clarify, so I think from what we're hearing is, we're pretty much okay to move forward with some kind of ordinance, and I think that the council last time discussed feet, right? I don't remember what the amount, 500 feet? So basically, you did your due diligence, and I think we're okay creating that ordinance there. If council is all in agreement, I think we just need to kind of implement something. And then I think the key, too, is just, and I don't know, we'd have to look at the financials, but I think the key is just informing everybody. I know it requires a lot of signs in a lot of these places, and figuring out, you know, what we're gonna do if they do park in there, what type of fine and everything, you know, I'm sure it's gonna be clearly displayed, 'cause there are certain areas that we know in Colleen where they kind of all park, and I think those are the areas that we need to focus on, so. Ms. King, Nash King?
Chief, would there be a grace period, like 30 days, to inform all of the truckers if you do come upon someone that parked in an illegal area? Would there be some kind of grace period?
Yeah, I would probably have to defer that to the attorney.
And I think that's something that what the council could decide in the ordinance, if we want to give them a grace period, which I think it seems fair, and I think if the council is willing to do that, why not?
This, to follow up on your question, man, I discussed this, what, kind of went out there to Clear Creek area and some other areas in town where I saw a congregation of trucks, and kind of spoke, at least the few truckers that we could, we kind of let them know that, that change was gonna come, and they just said, okay, just let us know what it is, and they said they kind of would just adjust, so.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Johnson.
If we, if we can't do a grace period, also an education factor as well, just ensure that they, you know, if we can prevent them from occurring fines, the last concern is how are we gonna pay for it, to enforce it? What's the cost?
I'm sure there'll be some signage, there'll probably be a little bit of some work on our end in the police department, but I believe we can probably fit that into our operational costs, what we already have.
I mean, KPD is already stretched as it is, never mind.
It would be, I think, just like a regular ticket, and you would have to, I think it's fair to just post that out there, you know, fines, 'cause in certain areas, just like parking, you know, no truck parking, fine up to whatever we decide.
Yeah, and the association seemed to be very helpful, I think if we want, I gave them the dates of this, of this meeting and the next two meetings, to let them know that we'll be discussing it. I told them that they may read about it in the local media also, so they're aware that a change will be coming in the City of Colleen as far as truck parking.
Mr. Kilpatrick.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Direct question to the city attorney, would we make that, that delay by an effective date and say, so we could come to a consensus tonight to say a 30-day, it'd be effective 30 days from publication, or 60 days?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I'd make a recommendation that we would make a 30-day effective date, so that would give us a time to know.
So we're just kind of, everybody's okay with that? 30-day grace period? Mrs. Fleming?
Yes, I just have one question, Chief.
Yes, ma'am.
With the truckers that are going in and out of Colleen, they come through here going from the south to the north, you know, all different places, so sometimes some of these truckers stop in Colleen, maybe to eat, and they're not even aware of what the ordinance says. So what about if one of those guys stops somewhere and not even aware of this?
I could hope.
It'd be like a warning or something that they would get, and say if they're from Dallas, they're coming through to go somewhere else, and not aware of this, so how would you handle that?
Yeah, I don't know, just kind of my experience, they generally don't park in the residential areas, from kind of what we have, at least I've seen since I've been here, is the ones that live here, and they park here. Now, if you're, if you're going through and you park, and your truck is there overnight, then I don't, I don't think they're here just to eat or get fuel, I think they're, they are here because they have family members, or they, they may have an apartment here, or a friend here, and they're moving, they're gonna keep moving. I believe very few of those people will be impacted by the ordinance, it'll be for those who actually live in Colleen and who are truckers, and they park there.
The reason I ask, my son's a truck driver, and sometimes he comes to Dallas, so when he comes through here, not living here, and not aware of the, you know, the ordinance, I just don't want him to get a big ticket.
That's why he's got a mom on the council, you better tell him.
Tell him your name's on the ordinance.
If he gets a ticket, we're gonna make fun of you.
But they have an association out of Austin, the Central Texas Truckers, I think that's what it is, and they're gonna put the word out, too, that the rules will be changing in Colleen, so.
I think people in business, this is a great opportunity, because when something like that, I think somebody will come up with an idea, a truck parking for them to make money out of it, so when something like this happens, I always look at it as a positive for people that are investors. Was that it, Mr. Kilpatrick?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I asked that a consensus be called for a 30-day.
Consensus, do we have a consensus? I just need some head knots, yes, yes? Yes, Ms. Fleming? 30-day grace period? Yes, yes, everybody? I think we got a majority, so.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, so do we, do we need any more guidance?
500 feet and 30-day effective date?
30-day effective date, how about the fine? Do we have to figure out the fine or anything?
Unless you say something different, it'll be whatever the normal fine is for a parking violation, I can't even remember what it is off the top of my head.
Yeah, if it says like 50 first-time offense, then there's a scale, I believe.
But unless you want to treat this one differently, it will be treated the same as any other parking violation.
I think, that's fine, 'cause I think they'll get the message, yeah. Everybody okay? All right. Thank you, Chief.
Next item is DS-18-024, Planning Session, and this is a Brief Economic Development Current Policy. This is just-
This is just on the policies. Dr. Shana, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. This evening, we're going to, we're going to begin the discussion about economic development and we're going to start with going over what we have to date. We have some policies, some agreements and some programs that we will introduce you After that, we want to discuss what else we may need to improve what, on what we have and possibly form new policy or policies, debate, discuss the new policy as long as we need to until we come up with something that's acceptable to everyone and adopt a new policy that will guide us forward. I will start with going over what we have. Ordinance number 06 dash 45 was passed by the city council on, in 2006, adopting a policy that established an economic development program for the enhancement of city sales tax revenues. It provided for the payment of funds to promote economic development and to stimulate commercial activity by encouraging qualifying businesses to locate within Colleen, resulting in the enhancement of sales tax. The policy that was stated within that ordinance states that the city council may at its discretion enter into an agreement for the city to pay funds to an applicant that qualifies under this policy. It sets the qualifications for eligibility to receive incentives. Within that ordinance, there's a list of criteria that a person or applicant has to meet for the council to consider granting such a request. Ordinance number 07 dash 010 was passed by the city council in the year 2007, establishing an economic development program for the encouragement of retail economic growth, expansion of local economy, creation of jobs and enhancement of city sales tax revenues. It provided for the payment of funds to promote economic development and to stimulate retail business. A policy stated within that ordinance states that the city council may at its discretion enter into an agreement for the city to rebate a portion of the 1% local option sales tax to an applicant that qualifies under this policy. This policy also establishes guidelines for providing economic development incentives. Another ordinance was passed in 2008, 09 dash 089, and this was to designate a contiguous geographic area within the city for tax increment financing purposes, TIRS 2, to promote economic development. And Tax Incrementary Investment Zone, TIRS as it's referred to, is a tool to promote economic development by earmarking property tax revenue from increases in assessed values within a designated TIRS. It carves out the increase in property tax and reserves it for economic development while the base year assessed value stays in the local tax base. New revenue can be used to pay for redevelopment, infrastructure and other community improvement projects. To date, this has not been used. We were hoping to use it if La Caskata, I knew it, it was supposed to be a big development coming to town, but we did accumulate a little bit of funds in this, in the TIRS fund. Ordinance number 13 dash 011 was passed in 2013 and it created a policy that established an economic development program for the encouragement of industrial economic growth, expansion of the economy, creation of jobs and the enhancement of city sales tax revenues. It established a program to provide for the payment of funds to promote economic development and to stimulate industrial business and commercial activity. The policy stated within this ordinance states that the council may, in its sole discretion, enter into an agreement to rebate a portion of the 1% local option municipal sales and use tax to an applicant that qualifies under this policy, similar to others before. Ordinance number 15 dash 055 was passed in the year 2015 that established the North Colleen Revitalization Program for the encouragement of revitalization and economic growth. The purpose of that, of this ordinance is to promote the development and redevelopment of North Colleen. This program includes incentives for residential and commercial business structures, rehabilitation, expansion and/or new construction. By adopting this program, the city intended to provide or intends to provide incentives by waiving certain fees and property tax abatements. This has been used to date, not as much as we expected, but some people have benefited from that and we have new, let's, let's put it this way, some structures have been rehabbed using this incentive. Another program that we have is the facade improvement program in downtown. This began in 2008. The city of Colleen offers facade grants for eligible rehabilitation projects located in the downtown historic overlay district. The grant is structured whereas the city contributes 80% of the project cost and the property owner contributes 20% of funds towards facade, roof and/or sign improvements, ultimately achieving a new face for downtown Colleen. Those grants are available for up to $10,000 per facade with a maximum of 20 per property owner in any given year. Currently, this program is funded by a grant from KADC, by the way. An agreement that the city has concerning economic development is with KADC, the Colleen Economic Development Corporation. The city entered into this agreement many, many years ago and is renewed every couple of years. The city entered into the agreement with KADC in order for them to provide economic development services such as to encourage and promote economic development, to recommend to the city council projects and programs for further economic development, and to commit and spend funds contributing to creation of new jobs or retention of jobs and to improve infrastructure. A lot of the economic development function has been delegated to KADC. When someone comes to request especially tax, a big tax abatement or any other incentives, they would go to the KADC, they're supposed to submit an application and provide certain information, they evaluate that and decide whether it meets the criteria spelled out and then they would present that to the city council. City council makes decisions on tax abatements, obviously. Little information about KADC. Their mission is to promote the development of commercial, industrial and manufacturing enterprises to promote and encourage employment and the public welfare. KADC maintains a website to promote their services and they receive applications for incentives, like I said earlier, and they negotiate with prospects to get the best return on the investment before they approach the council with any proposals. Another agreement we have for economic development and that is with the Colleen Chamber of Commerce. This agreement goes way back and is renewed every couple of years to provide economic development services such as to promote and encourage development of new and expanded business, commerce and industry, to plan, organize and direct economic development programs, to coordinate activities of various groups involved in the economic development business, and to maintain an economic development website. Little more information about the chamber. They have a work plan that includes activities such as create an environment for the growth of new business, conduct a business recruitment program, provide staff support for KADC and Colleen Industrial Foundation, implement a communications plan to provide professional, timely and accurate content in various forms, operate leadership Colleen to enhance the skills of future community and business leaders to provide value to participants and sponsors, and to develop and engage young professionals who aspire to become leaders for the future. What we have today is good. However, there's always room for improvement and the city manager thought we need to bring this up to you so you'll know what we have and so we can discuss what we need and what you think we need to better serve the city of Colleen as far as economic development is concerned. We will be having future discussions on this topic to eventually arrive at what it is that we think will work for Colleen. That concludes my presentation.
Mrs. Nash King?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, sir, for the presentation. There are some great incentives that you discussed tonight, but my concern is downtown Colleen, that for small businesses, more incentives to get them to want to come downtown Colleen. I mean, there are great incentives that we do have, but it's, to me, and I'm not an expert in this field, but it, it seems as if it's not meeting their needs, that they would want to come downtown. And we talked about the incentives to do a makeover for the downtown businesses down there with 80%, 20%, which is great, but more, my recommendation just me, I think more incentives and we need to reach out to the small businesses and talk to them one on one to see if they would like to come downtown. That's just a recommendation, sir.
Yes, ma'am. That's a very good suggestion and we, we would love to have more resources so we could do that.
Mr. Oakley?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. As far as business, business is not gonna float on small business and what we need is big, what, what the north side needs is something to hold it down. Some things, infrastructure or, or business that will hold, hold it down, like a Walmart or HEB or someone of that, someone of that magnitude, because what you're looking at, on the, on the north, you're talking about anywhere, any economic development, small businesses do, do not have the capability to, to do some things like with water and sewage that a big, that a big business could do. And so with that, I think with the, that the TIRS, anything that goes into TIRS, that should be a focus of, that should be a focus of, of something, of, of a mechanism for bringing people or drawing people there. You can look at the model of even a Walmart, Walmart brings with it, you know, various stores around it, but, but we're talking about getting into, you're talking about even justify, justifying water and sewage, you're talking about piping, things like that, of that nature. Nobody's gonna build on, on old antiquated infrastructure. So I'm, I'm just saying, I'm just throwing it out there.
That's one of our main objectives, is our infrastructure.
Thank you.
Sir, that is something obviously that needs to be discussed. Some of the incentives that other cities offer would be, infrastructure would be targeted, incentives to big businesses in certain zones. So we can encourage certain businesses to come to certain zones by maybe incentivizing them a little bit more. Anyway, all this needs to be aired out and discussed and maybe hopefully we can come up with a plan that will work.
So we do have something, what is the TIRS right now?
The TIRS, the TIRS includes all the area you were talking about and we were going to utilize that for a Walmart that was supposed to come, but didn't happen, but the land is there and we could still incentivize hopefully somebody as big as Walmart, maybe different kind of business, to come to Colleen and revitalize that area.
Thank you.
Mrs. Fleming?
Sure, Mr.
Do you want to comment on that, Mr. Olson? Mrs. Fleming?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Dr. Shana, thank you as well for coming and introducing the economic development structure and the policy. My, I want to just ask you a question. On your staff at the economic development, is there someone in the economic development is responsible for going out into the community, not only Colleen but other areas of Texas like Dallas and Fort Worth, seeking businesses that want to come here, like, like industry? We need industry here bad, so is there anyone in the economic development that is responsible for that and has a job just to do those things?
No, ma'am. The answer is no, we don't. We have no staff dedicated for that purpose. Like I said earlier, this function has been mostly delegated to KADC and the chamber.
But that's a, that's a thing that we really do need to work on, someone that all they have to do is go out, like human resource, and identify these big industries and say, we have this here to offer in Colleen, can you or would you like to come here because we have all this to offer? So we need to do a needs assessment.
And that's what the, the KADC does, you know, what the chamber does, they got a person that's just dedicated to that.
That's what I'm asking. Who does that?
Yeah, so not the city, but the chamber does. So there is somebody there. Phyllis does that.
Okay, then, what I'm saying is, is that when do we ever get a report to say that they've gone out and identified and talked to these places?
Yeah.
The city council has never gotten these reports to say, this person has gone out and she's identified 20 businesses up in Dallas to ask them to come here. We don't know that. That's what I'm asking. Is there someone responsible, sir, to do this? Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Shana.
Okay. Mr. Johnson?
Just a, a few comments. What, as a businessman, also a council person, I travel across the country at least once, once a month and I always take the opportunity to meet with local, local elected officials. As a six-year resident, I do think that the city, KADC and other partners have not fully embraced a narrowly focused economic development policy. What I would like to see is something similar to the city of Fort Worth. They have just adopted their economic development strategic plan and actually the North Colleen Revitalization Program, I actually got that from Fort Worth when I proposed that, but they called it a neighborhood empowerment zone. If we had a all-inclusive program that complemented other programs such as the COMP Plan, the TheraFair Plan and Vision 2030, I think we can, we can, we can have more headway. As a, as a prospective business person, I mean, I would like to see one location I can go to and see all the centers and all the programs listed and, and see the city's vision, their plan, because in my opinion, as a council person, I do think economic development is the most viable solution to expanding the city's tax base. The citizens are taxed out. If, if we, if we really can take bold steps to bring in new jobs, new industry, KPD can have the resources they need, fire department can have the fire stations they need, solid waste workers can make more than what they're making. And, and I think this is the option. I understand the difference between KADC and Chamber. The Chamber is business development, EDC is economic development, but the city can't just contract out its responsibilities. We do have a role to play and I think how everything is with the programs laid out here, the programs there, EDC's over there, Chamber's over there, the city is somewhere back there, the left hand doesn't know what the right hand is doing, so we really have to get on one page. And I think having an inclusive economic development plan, strategic plan will work, work well.
All right. Mr. Harris?
I'm pretty glad we're having this discussion because, you know, even the comments that I heard from my fellow council members were very good and inquisitive as far as the questioning, but, you know, I agree with the council members and the ones that said that, I guess in the end that as far as communication wise, as far as knowing what one side is doing, what the other side is doing and so forth. But I have this question right here, it says, when's the last time the KADC actually came to us, the council, with recommendations and/or input? Because I mean, I don't really remember when that, the last time that happened, but when's the last time they actually came to us with something like that? when's the last time they actually came to us with something like that?
I don't remember, sir.
Okay. Okay. Next question, can we, and this is, of course, you can email this to us, but can we have a list of the industrial and commercial businesses and, you know, and the dates that they've been brought in in the past six years? Because, I mean, I just want to know what's been brought in, so when, I guess the past six years, I've been on the stop there, if we can have a list of what has been brought in to Caline since that time period? And, let's see. And I see right here when it says, let's see what page this is on here, it's one of the pages, it says, "The Chamber's plan of work includes many activities such as creating an environment for the growth of a new business." You know, one of my questions is, if you can, if you can find out for me, what is their idea of an ideal environment? Because, you know, I said before, we talked about it, communication-wise, we haven't talked to, we haven't really talked to the chamber about a vision, we haven't talked to KDC about a vision, and like I said, everybody has their own vision, but nobody's coming together to collaborate and come up with one full vision. Just one person's vision or one group's vision is being accomplished right now or being productive right now, but that's why I say we need to come together and do that. Also, where it says, "Provide staff support for KDC and Caline Industrial Foundation," and with that, the staff support, what's the level of staff report that is, that is actually supplied? I mean, do we just have people with the chamber that help out the KDC, or does, when it says...
No, sir, we do not have any staff. That is the chamber staff working for KADC.
Oh, the chamber staff working for KDC? Ah, okay, so they have two jobs, I guess? They have two jobs? I mean, okay. Because I was, because I was trying to understand how that worked, and so, so the people work for the chamber actually also work for the KDC?
Right. They, like I said, economic development has been delegated to them, they do all the work.
Okay. All right. Okay, um, let's see. And, yeah, that's it right there. Okay. Thank you, sir.
All right. Mr. Kilpatrick?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I also agree with the council members, where a focus must be not only envisioned but almost be placed into a, a plan in writing with specific goals, guidances, and what we, what we desire. I agree with Councilman Harris. We all have our own particular ideas about what it is, with none of us being, being exactly qualified to go out and recruit a business. We've never done it, we're not, we're not on a major Fortune Five, or Five Hundred business, we're done. But we need to get together to determine how it is. We have a proposal placed before us, before the city. We've supported that two years ago with a proclamation, and that was the, our major partner, if you want to send a message to, to the community, you want to send a message to the economic development community, give support to a major effort, and then take it back. And that is the Mounted Warfare Museum. That will bring a hundred and fifty to, a hundred and seventy-five thousand people a year to this community in central Texas. Approximately eighty percent of those are going to stay two to three days. It's only one mile from the center of our city downtown, and we have always said that one of our major efforts, consensus amongst this council, is to improve downtown. Well, we need to put, in some cases of this, this is my personal opinion, but does not reflect this council, we need to put our money where our mouth is. We had eighty-five thousand dollars budgeted to economic development for that, that NITD. We withdraw it from this budget, but we offered other things. That would also fulfill our comprehensive plan. Our comprehensive plan says that we want Caline to be a destination city. That, the Infantry Museum at Columbus, Georgia, has now made Columbus, Georgia, a destination city. Our Phantom Warrior, Mounted Warrior Museum, would do the very same thing for our central Texas, bring in not only people, but then it would bring spin-off industries in order to, to support those. Given that, that's an idea. That's only one of many ideas, and I would, I would say that we need to, we need to further look at through, not committees, we got enough committees. We got a downtown committee that hasn't met in over four months. Yeah, so we don't need committees. We need action. We need to do it, and we need to get our workshops involved into it and, and working with. I'm agreeing with the council, other members, that while I fully understand the sensitivity of recruiting, I understand that we have a, we have committees that work with the NITD, and they brief. This, this council needs to be involved into that. We need to be briefed about what they're doing, how they're doing, what their organizations are, and then get input from the council, not the individuals, the council's vision of what the economic development policies should be, not the day-to-day grunge work, not how they go about doing their business, who they go see, when they go see them, it's what is our policy of where you should be operating into. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And I think that, that's where we're at. I know we've kind of weirded off a little bit, but I think the issue was the policy, and the policy, you guys got, brought some good questions there, and the policy should be, you know, regular updates, you know, because I think that's important. I personally think they do a lot, but I'm at the forefront of that, so you guys do not see what I see, and I think it's important as councilmembers to be able to see a lot of that stuff, you know, and it's like, so that way you guys know, because I'm a business guy, and I know what it takes, you know, I have probably, I got the number one location of my type of business in the City of Caline, and yet every morning I go to my office, I open the door, and there's not a line of people waiting to come into my office, and so that tells me something, you know, you got to be out there hunting, and downtown is kind of the same way. We talk about downtown, and we've had a lot of great businesses open. There's some of my favorite, and they shut down with our incentives, you know. I sold one business, they used the facade grant, and it's shut down, you know. We've had great businesses, because what they don't have is the foot traffic, and so it doesn't matter how great of business, Walmart, Walmart used to build four hundred stores a year, now they build forty because, you know, they're the large, so it's not going to solve the problem. The issue is, where's that walking traffic that is needed down there for a business who, you know, if I opened up downtown, I even have to work three times as hard to get that walk traffic come down there, even if I build a palace. And so the key is, you know, how do you make it? Because I think that the city council have passed, have done a great job in improving our downtown, you know, we got great cities, we got monuments, we got, but that's still not enough. The rest of it has to be done by those private owners that are down there, because I get a lot of calls as mayors, "Mayor, what are you going to do about my business?" I say, "I'll go eat there. That's about it. You want me, I'll spend a little bit of money there." But I can't bring traffic to your business and make you a success unless you come up with some kind of creative process that's going to make a lot of people go there on a daily basis, otherwise, you know, don't have it, because you have to have some sort of incentive program, something that's attraction, and to be an attractive city, you can't force anybody to come there unless there's something there that's going to make me want to go there, just like my office. Even though I have the number one location right there, my parking lot is full of three or four hundred cars every day, people do not come in my business just because I'm there. And so that's how a business works, it's you got to count the number of people you need in order to walk in that door every single day to be successful, it doesn't matter how beautiful it is. And so that's how business works, and so that's the key. Mr. Rivera?
Yeah, talking about the committees, they were talking about the downtown committee, and we did the downtown committee, first of all, we went there and we saw the mission, and I know this is about policies about, but we saw the mission, there's no money that we could spend in downtown. That's why we didn't have any, any meeting, because people will come in and they want to do a lot of things, but there was no, no money to deal with it. Mr. Mayor, in order, and this is the bottom line, what I hear, and I agree with everyone on the floor, is that we need to have EDC come down from A to C and explain to us the system that they have, so we don't compare their system with the staff and the city, because there's a lot of questions there, and we need to answer those questions. They really need to come appear.
And I agree, and I think that's partly the policy that we're talking about, because we got a meeting tomorrow, we'll be there, and me and a couple of council members, we know what's going on, we know the businesses that are going, some of them don't want to be disclosed yet at this point.
I've been working with EDC now for almost twenty years, in and out, but I still believe that we got different city councils.
But it may be something that we may have to do behind closed doors for certain businesses, but at least you guys are aware of what's happening, so.
Well, I agree with you, but with EDC come over, I really would like to just see this open, so the citizen can hear also what's going on with EDC.
All right. Mr. Olson?
Mayor, council, I appreciate your questions and comments. I've been trying to keep track of the questions. This process that Dr. Shana recently outlined here on the PowerPoint, I think is a good one, and that is, we've started tonight by identifying where we're at. I've heard a whole bunch of questions come out of the council. We'll come back and schedule another, another discussion. We're not going to try to solve it all in one meeting or two meetings necessarily, and we'll answer your questions. That'll probably generate a few more questions, and we'll answer those as well, and we'll start to draft some kind of a policy. Maybe Fort Worth has a good document for us to start with, but we'll start to craft the policy, and, and I think at the end of the discussion, we're going to end up in a better place than we are today.
All right. That sounds good. Anybody else?
Just want to say one more thing.
Mrs. Nash King?
When it comes to policies, Mr. Mayor, I thank you. Downtown is very important. We started there, and until we waiting until these big industrial companies to come in, small businesses are a part of our community, so they're just as important as a big industrial. And when it comes to an incentive, it don't have to be financial, it can be advertisement for thirty days, free. There's something that we can get people to continue to go downtown, and it's the monument, as Mr. Kilpatrick stated, we want them to be downtown, we want restaurants downtown, we want clothing stores downtown. That's important, because that is a part of all of us, the north side, the south side, it all works together, and thank you.
And that's a good, because I, I'm a true believer that a town grows a small, but you grow within. A lot of times, they're so focused on attracting bigger businesses, but these businesses usually grew in that town and became big, and we do have some. There's a business downtown, he has hundreds of employees, and they work on Fort Hood, because a lot of people don't realize that downtown and all the way to one ninety-five is a hub zone. So if you're a minority, and you want a business, and you want a government contract, you know, you get first priority, and so those are things that a lot of times people don't understand or don't know, and this business took advantage of it. They got employees all over the country, and they're right there downtown, just a lot of people don't know that, so. There's a lot of great things that, that happen, it's just getting the businesses, getting the investors to take that risk, and if we want them to take the risk, and yet we don't do it, then, you know, that's the key, you know. So those great cities that have, you see, grow is because they do, they've taken risk, so. All right, Dr. Shana, we appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, we are down to our last item, and this last item is a closed session, zero DS eighteen dash zero two five, discuss and conduct annual evaluation of the city manager. So as soon as I read this, we'll take a break. Pursuant to the Texas Meeting Law, VTC A Government Code five-five-one, the mayor now calls a closed meeting of the city council on the twentieth day of March twenty eighteen at six oh five PM under the following authority, personnel matters, the city will discuss and conduct the annual evaluation of the city manager. Public discussion of this matter will not be in the best interest of the city. We're going to take a ten-minute break.